That the county's needs could be met with a reduction. Our citizens need a break and you're in a position to provide that break. And we ask that you do so. Our Tier One County needs to be efficient in order to prosper. Tier One is the lowest forty counties in North Carolina. Neighboring counties Franklin Tier Two and Granville Tier Three are doing much better at attracting businesses as attested by their growth. County tiers are calculated by average unemployment, median household income, percentage of growth in population, and adjusted property tax base per capita. Benefits of being a Tier One County are eligible for more grant funding. Are we taking advantage of that? And eligible for more funding for infrastructure improvements. Are we taking advantage of this? If so, who is in charge is their committee because hopefully if we qualify, we are taking every advantage we can get to promote our tier. At the budget meeting, budget retreat meeting Friday, I believe our growth was at twenty-nine point one percent compared to Franklin County of over a hundred and seventy percent. Shocking numbers and please correct me if I'm wrong or misinterpreted. But our leaders for the county and city need to promote growth and behave in a way to entice growth, not push it away. We must work better together before we are forever left behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Chantler, Audit.
Good evening, Lee Chantler, forty-five sixty-eight Hicksburg Road, Henderson. Twenty-five million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty in surplus was told to me. Your audit report that I believe will be discussed tonight, a new surplus is almost twenty-seven million dollars. A difference of one point two million dollars. To the good. From twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four, you profited five point seven million dollars and raised our taxes. You raised our taxes, profiting five point seven million dollars. Since twenty-twenty, according to the audit report, you all have profited twelve million dollars. And again, still raised our taxes. Raised our taxes. How much are we gonna get this, this year? Is that number gonna be five point seven or is it gonna be closer to ten? I understand that you have eighty-plus employees in Vance County, Shorty. I get it. I really do. But that hasn't stopped the day-to-day operations of Vance County. Therefore, it tells me you don't need them eighty people. It's just common sense. I do want to applaud you all. I've heard from y'all in the last month. I've heard from everyone on this board except Warren. I appreciate that. I also like to commend Commissioner Hester for returning the one thousand dollar bonus that he received. He returned it to Vance County. I, I get it. Give it to the employees. Where does it stop? Twelve million dollars and you all raised our taxes. That's how much y'all profited. So my question is, and I, I, I sent this in an email today. Is Vance County a government agency or is it a full-profit entity? At twelve million dollars over four years, five point seven last year? And there's no telling what we're gonna get this year. It's a shame. These folks are hurting there, you know? They're hurting. They can't pay it. You got people on fixed incomes. The older elderly widows and widowers that can't pay this stuff. Worked all their lives, paid all the taxes all their life and can't pay it. I said it last meeting. Thing needs to be a tax cut. You got twenty-seven million dollars. You got twenty-seven million dollars. And in twenty-seven million dollars is what you collected last year in taxes. I end with this. Thomas Payne, our founding father, said, "What at first it was plunder assumed a softer, a softer name of revenue."
Laura Perkins, open your phones. Laura Perkins.
Hi, my name is Laura Perkins. I live at fifteen sixty Tallyweldon Road in Henderson, North Carolina. I'd like to change things up just a bit tonight. I'd like to thank you all for having open ears and open minds. You are proving that citizen involvement can make a change. I hope we continue on a progressive path forward in positive change. I sincerely want to thank the citizens sitting in the pews behind me, the ones watching online, and the hundreds of citizens having these much-needed conversations every day. Views online have drastically increased and these pews are filled every month. And that tells me we are ready for change. I attended and watched online the retreat last week and I want to commend you all for asking questions. Not just questions, but the right questions. Thank you specifically to Leo Kelly. You were right on track and I appreciate you and Commissioner Perry advocating to get people with real experience with the opioid crisis on the advisory board. Follow the lead of surrounding counties. Yes, we need a behavioral center and I will not deny that. But it is very selfish to focus those funds solely on one project when it is a multifaceted problem. There are so many educated advocates such as Patricia Drews and Tisha Temple, who would be an asset to the opioid advisory board. I would also love to volunteer myself for a seat if the need arises. I spoke to a young man last week from Vance County with five years sobriety. He has traveled from coast to coast and top to bottom. He told me that he was shocked at the absolute lack of services we have here. No support, lack of treatment, and limited access to resources and meetings. There was only one AA in a meeting here and he was unable to find it. There were no signs saying where it was and he couldn't locate it. So I explained where it was so he could attend the next one. He said there was no way he could have long-term sobriety here. Vance County is just not set up for it. We've got to make a change. Thank you all for listening and giving me three minutes to speak tonight. I wish it would go across the entire town like that. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. I'm now forming on William Poker, Community Partnership for Pet Grants.
Good evening, Commissioners. I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you a minute about this grant opportunity, this Spay and Neuter grant. This grant come to me through Tracy Trumbor, Director of Ruin Creek Animal Protection Society. Mary Savannah is the President of C C, CPPI that has reached out and offered this grant. I would like to start by saying though, my top priority as Director of Vance County Animal Services is to this community, to the citizens in this community. Animal Services is a public safety agency and my staff and I do our job with that in mind. But in saying that, we are also divorced for the animals in the community. And I will use every state statute and county ordinance to enforce people take care of their animals. I'm dedicated to that. A big part of our job is picking up stray dogs and furrow cats. It never stops. Right now in Vance County, the shelter has five litters of puppies, ranging from eight weeks to three days old. And we've got two more litters scheduled this week to be surrendered to the county. I have been here that our shelter stays full mainly through the breeding season, but it's not really the stopping. It's continuous. So we have a, uh, opportunity to focus on spay and neuter for everybody. We have a grant now and it's a great grant. And it helps anybody that gets any kind of government or state assistance. It helps. It pays for it. But it's a lot of people in this community that could use that help that I can't give it to them. The working-class people that's raising a family, they also need the help. So that's why I'm fighting for this grant. I'm asking you for your consideration on it. It's a matching grant, the best I could do at this time. But it's an opportunity. Mary Savannah has said with this grant, it'll open doors to other ones. I'm a grant person. I want to get grants to help. So I appreciate your consideration in this and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. That is much needed. What's the pleasure of the board? That takes action on it.
We've got some ten thousand dollar grant.
We'll have to match ten thousand out of fund balance.
Chair, can you use harder hearing over?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize. We hard here.
We got a ten thousand dollar matching grant, I mean grant, so the county has to match it. So we asking, I'm asking the pleasure of the board. It has a grant for the shelter and it's up to us. We haven't had anything yet. That's what we know.
I think you ought to turn it over to the committee and let the committee look at it as far as that's concerned. And or if somebody wants to make a motion, make the motion. Okay, I'll make the motion.
Because I think it's a, it's a great grant. Very much needed, very much needed. It has been motioned as second discussion. The motion has it. Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
All in favor say aye.
All in favor say aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
The ayes have it. Thank you so much, Mr. Cooper. We all smiling. We all want a court. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we'll bring the budget amendment back at the next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm an animal lover as well. Thank you again, Mr. Cooper. It's very much needed. And thank you, board. Right now we have a Portia Brooks, Tax Administrator, Untimely Exemption, Personal Property Appeal.
Good evening, everyone. I have before you. Guess we'll do it in three parts. Because I have elderly exemptions. Twenty-three elderly exemption, two disabled exemption, three veterans, and one circuit breaker before you tonight. All of them met the qualifications. They just was untimely. So if they would have been turned in on time, they would have been approved. Do you need me to call all the names?
What's now?
A motion?
Yes.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? It has been motioned as second. And all that in favor, aye? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay. And my next one. I have a Miss Dew. And that one is a Judy Dew. That one is an untimely application for present use. And she met all the qualifications. It just wasn't turned in by January thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. But if it would have been turned in, we would have approved it. I forget a motion.
Of the board? It has been motioned as second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it.
And my last one is a solar farm. And I just handed out this evening to Cypress Creek Group sent additional information. But these are solar farms that are in Vance County. Wertham Solar, Standback Solar Farm, Vance Solar, Bullock Solar, Stage Coach, Vicksburg, and Melinda owner solar farms. And they are appealing the T eighteen schedule. And Vance County, we used the index factor from the Department of Revenue. And in using that, we, we, we discussed it with the Department of Revenue along with other counties. And we're going based on their recommendation is to keep it the same. We don't see where we need to change their schedule according to what they predicted. But they did send additional information this evening. New schedules. And if you look. I guess we could look at Wertham, the first one. We have a value of one million, two oh nine fifty-five. And they said they think the value should be four hundred and three thousand. Same with Standback. We have a value of one million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine thirteen. They think the value should be four hundred and forty thousand, four thirty-five. Vance Solar, we have one, one million, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and. Excuse me. One million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And they have a value of three eighty-eight, nine. Bullock, nine million, five, five hundred, twenty-nine thousand, five fifty-nine. And they have a value of four million, four hundred thousand, eighty-six. Sage Coach, one million, five hundred, ninety-five thousand, nine ninety-six. They have a value of three eighty-seven, six seventy-one. Vicksburg, one million, five ninety-five, nine ninety-six. Well, actually Vicksburg is one million, six seventy, eight ninety-five. And they have a value of four one five hundred. And Melinda, one million, four eighty, seven eighty-two. And they have a value of three sixty-four, eight thirty-three. And I reached out to the other counties that have this similar appeal. And we all came to the same conclusion that the value would remain the same. One of the counties is already at the Property Tax Commission and one is waiting to be heard before the board. But we all standing with the recommendation from the Department of Revenue.
So you're saying this, this is just their opinion? No, not that you support it?
Not really, no.
When you look at their opinion in terms of these opinion, did they get together as a group and decide they're going to submit this?
Yes.
As a group?
Mm-hmm.
This is a. What does not hit shown here is the value of these farms is over eighteen years.
Right.
Declining balance every year.
Right.
Am I wrong?
You're right. We're on a depreciation of eighteen years.
Yes, these figures will be less next year. And that's the, and the Department of Revenue has said this is the way you need to look at these farms.
Right. Correct.
I make a motion, believe me as I am.
Yes.
Second.
It has been motioned as second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Now we have Thompson Price, Scott Adams and Company, Audit Report Presentation.
Well, good evening. You should have in front of you a presentation summary that looks like this for the audit report. If you'd be kind enough to flip over to page one. Before I start, the main reason you hire us as an audit firm is to issue an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. We issued an unmodified report, which is a quote-unquote good report. And I do want to thank the county Audit Committee. I think the, the two committee meetings that we participated in as a firm were productive. I think they helped everybody out. Hopefully they were productive for the committee as well. Under Qualitative Aspects of Accounting Practices on page one, in those three paragraphs, there's a phrase in each one of them. It talks about appropriate accounting policies. Accounting estimates and disclosures in the financial statements are neutral, consistent, and clear. We were good with all three of those. On page two. There were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit and there were no uncorrected misstatements. There were no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated January twenty-seventh. We're unaware that management consulted the outside accountants, auditors, et cetera. And then under Other Findings or Issues. There were some year-end adjustments that were not made prior to sending us a final trial balance. We believe that finance needs to prepare those journal entries going forward. We also believe that the transition during the past year where several staff members weren't trained when the new administration came in, that they need to, those staff members need to continue to be trained. And then we believe that the county needs to devote some time to reconciling balance sheet accounts, particularly receivables, payables, and salary and benefit account payables. While some of these accounts are not material, it does help make sure that everything is exactly accurate. And then on page three, that first full paragraph there. There was an indicator of concern on the water fund. And the way this works under the LGC's new format is if your operating income, when you add back depreciation and then subtract out any debt service is negative, and I think it was negative by about fifteen, sixteen thousand, then they asked you to look at that to see what you can do to make that positive because all proprietary or business-type activity funds need to be positive in the operating income, if you will. Though we may not talk a lot about it tonight, under the findings inside the audit report, there were four Medicaid-type findings compliance-wise. They were all technical errors with no question cost. That was addressed with DHS. They did provide us with a response letter on all items. And then under Other Matters down there, it talks about what we're actually reporting on, which I discussed earlier. And then it talks about the new standard Gatsby one oh one, which will require finance the whole county to put a lot of effort into complying with that going forward, which will be effective for June thirty, twenty twenty-five. And then on page four, when we get to the actual numbers. I don't say these are all the key numbers in the audit report, but these are definitely some of the key numbers in the audit report. We attempt to put the June thirty, twenty twenty-four numbers in this first column and then the prior four-year audit report numbers to the right of that so that you have a feel for any trend information or you're not just left with a number without any context. So you can see total fund balance there in your general fund at thirty-four million, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand. Unavailable fund balance at seven million, seventy-nine thousand, restricted and committed at seven point eight million. Total general fund expenditures at fifty-two million, eight ninety-five. And then fund balance available as a percentage of your general fund expenditures at fifty-two point five percent. Unassigned fund balance at twenty-six million, nine eighty-nine. And then unassigned fund balance as a percentage at fifty-one point oh two percent. Revenues over and under expenses before financing, other financing sources, general fund was five point two million. The water fund had a negative one hundred and fifty-two thousand. The solid waste was a positive twenty-seven thousand, six seventy-three. You can see your fixed assets there in your water fund at sixteen point six million, accumulated depreciation at three point two, and the cash at a million nine. Cash in the general fund is thirty million, nine eighty-seven. Again, cash in your water fund is one point nine million and solid waste is a hundred and forty-four thousand. And other governmental's was twenty-three point three million. Fund balance in general fund again is thirty-four point eight million. The net position in your water fund is four point six million and the net position in your solid waste is seven hundred and twenty thousand. Other governmental's is eighteen point two. You see your property tax rates there, the same across the board. You see your collection percentage at ninety-seven point three seven percent. And then the total levy amount at twenty-seven million, three hundred and twenty thousand. And a breakdown of your debt, total governmental and business-type activity debt at twenty-nine million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand. And then on page five, without reading every department, you can see total general fund revenues at fifty-five point six million and total general fund expenditures at fifty million, four hundred and eight thousand. On page six, on the chart on the top, you can see analysis of fund balance. Total fund balance there in blue, the restricted and committed in red. And then on the bottom, you see an analysis of fund balance available as a percentage compared to your group-weighted average. County at fifty-two point five, your group-weighted average at fifty-one point seven nine percent. And then on page seven, you see analysis of your unassigned fund balance as a percentage, fifty-one point oh two percent. And then on the bottom, you see revenues over and under expenses before transfers, both for your general, or for your general fund, water fund, and solid waste fund. On page eight, you see your cash balances and fund balances there in a pie chart at the top for each. And then the specific numbers underneath with a total cash of fifty-six million, three sixty-nine, and total fund balances of fifty-eight point four million. Then on page nine, you see your property tax rates there with the group-weighted average. And then you, on the bottom of that, you see your collection percentages with the group-weighted average. On page ten, you see the debt analysis by percentage and amount for both governmental and business activities. And then on page eleven. You see a breakdown by percentage of the general fund revenue. And you see the add-on taxes make up forty-eight point nine seven percent of the overall budget in the general fund. On the bottom, you see where education, public safety, and human services make up the three largest expenditure percentages. On page twelve, we talk about a couple other items. The responses on some of these items, you have to actually respond to the LGC on two thousand and twenty-four dash oh oh one, the budget violation. That related to a Gatsby eighty-seven, which is your leases, and a Gatsby ninety-six, which is your subscription-based information technology items. They're non-cash in terms of the way they're allocated and the way they're accrued. It's really an accounting journal entry, but they need to be made prior to the end of the year. Otherwise, you're always going to have a budget violation. Under twenty twenty-four oh oh two, the reconciliation of records. Certain account balances, we noticed several accounts were still not reconciled at the end of the year. The EMC, EMC, EMS receivables, the water receivables, solid waste, and taxes to the general ledger. And then same finding as the prior year regarding to the previous finance officer on secondary approval oversight, et cetera, on the wire county funds. And then on page thirteen, there is. You'll have to respond regarding the timeliness of the audit. And I think the last time I was here was June first, if something like that. So about a seven, eight-month period of time on the turnaround on the June thirty, twenty twenty-four audit, which is a pretty expedited, but still got a ways to go. The LGC where we were for my forty years doing this was October thirty-first. And in January, they changed that date to December thirty-first because very few people were meeting that deadline. And this year, the confirmations from DHS didn't actually get out till December twelfth. So it was very difficult to finish anything prior to that. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you've got of me tonight or any other time. And again, I appreciate the Audit Committee and the effort they put into that and the, all the exchanges we got there. I think I wasn't there, but one on a phone call and then Hunter was there the other two times. So I appreciate all the effort that went into that. Yes, sir.
You mentioned the water fund and I have concerns about it. And I guess. We lost a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in the water fund this year. Yet the fund balance increased by a hundred and sixty-three thousand. What, can you explain that?
I hope so. Hope I can get that. What they're looking at is. What they're looking at is,
I'm on page four.
Yes, sir. What they look at is operating income and not total increase in net position there. So if you've got other items like investment income of sixty-two thousand, eight oh seven, which would make it cash flow positive, if you will, they're not taking that into consideration. I'm not saying they shouldn't. I'm just saying for that particular computation formula that they have, they don't look at that item. And so when you looked at the water fund, I'm in agreement. It had operating income of a minus, I'm sorry, a positive ninety-nine thousand dollars. You have depreciation expense of four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So you add that back, and I'm gonna do some rounding to make my math easy for me. So that's about five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Your debt service payment is about five hundred and thirty thousand, interest and principal. So they take that five hundred and sixteen and subtract out that debt service payment. Say you got a negative cash flow for operating income. They don't add in the sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars of investment earnings. That, that's the challenge. And realize, they, they are saying, look at it. They're not saying it's right or wrong. They're saying, hey, take a look at it. So it's just our job to say, hey, take a look at it.
A lot of the loss did is depreciation.
That's right. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Along the water fund point, I, one thing that I wanted to make sure was apparent to you. If you go back and look at that five years ago, where it was standing versus where it is today, and you're gonna see an exceptionally different thing going back and looking over the five years of where it's gone and where it started.
Completely in agreement. And you can see, as, as you referred on page four, where your cash in your water fund, if you go back to 2020, is a million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, and now it's a million, nine hundred thousand. So the cash is increasing. So I'm not in disagreement. I'm just the messenger here from the LGC who says I have to tell you that.
Thank you. You're gonna see with us in our last phase of our waters hang out in the central area and what we're looking at as far as number of customers out that direction, you're gonna see this completely moving forward differently. It's, it's been a success moving over the years and gotten potentially better and better and better.
See, and I think that's all they're really asking of you. You, you know what's gonna happen. You're here on the ground. So responding back to them saying, it's gonna get better. Just take a, just relax.
Thank goodness this board got together and got seventy percent of the money from the USDA for grants.
That's exactly right.
Any more questions?
I've got a couple. Last year, you and I had some pretty frank discussions. Your presentation this year matched the previous four years without pointing out anything after we had a discussion last year of why you didn't come in front of this board and frankly tell us what your findings meant and concerns that we had for staff. So I feel I have to ask you directly. Do you still have those same concerns you had about some of our staff in the previous years as you had during this year?
I mean, the staff is different in terms of both from the June 30, 2023 audit to the June 30, 2024 audit. That, you have a new manager and you have a new finance officer. The item we referred to here in terms of training staff, the previous finance officer had a, a policy of not training staff. The current administration does not have that policy and are working towards that. And as I referred to earlier in the presentation, I think the last time I was here, June 1st of 2024, which your staff that's currently here had only been here a few months. So this audit covers that June 30, 2024, where they were only here for a couple, two to six months, whatever. And so that period of time is not adequate to make a determination on a complete change or not change. And so from my, my standpoint, our findings were during the June, July 1st through 2023, the June 30, 2024 period of time. So as a result, when you had a finance officer in place for about seven or so months of that time period, we have to have those same findings.
I, I fully understand why the same findings are there. But again, I was concerned that after the fact last year, you made it sound like you had a lot more concerns than any of us sitting around this, Diaz, understood or gathered from your previous presentations. So rather than relying on your reports and your presentations, I'm asking you specifically, do you still have those concerns about any of our staff and the findings that you found during this audit process?
No.
Did you have any of the issues dealing with management or lack of dealing with management when you found issues during this audit process that you admitted last year you should have gone to management sooner than you had or failed to go to management when you weren't getting the responses from our staff?
No, I have contacted Stephanie and your county manager on a regular basis and got positive responses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we want to commend our manager and her administrative staff for doing a great job in putting this audit together. Due to the fact that it did inherit some unforeseen, unforeseen circumstances, but they have done a wonderful job and they have worked very hard to put this audit together. So we, I commend you all and thank you all for a job well done.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Thank you. And I would just like to say thank you to Stephanie and her staff just because she inherited a mess, and I think we all know that. And for us to have turned it around in the short period that we have, I'm very proud of my staff. And, and we're, and we're great because of the staff. So yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you all.
Madam Chairman, have we received the audit report?
Is there a second? He has been motioning second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All say it. Thank you. Now we will hear from Sheriff Curtis Brain, Detention Center Plans of Action.
You know, pull a muscle. Don't say nothing, Dan. We're the same age. Good afternoon. First of all, I wish you all could have been at the retreat and listened to the discussion so we wouldn't have to repeat this again, but here we are. I think we had a great retreat and a great discussion. But people, commissions, we have a serious problem at our detention center. We're at a critical stage at our detention center. Addressing our deficiencies is not gonna solve our problem at our detention center. This is something I inherited in 2018 when I ran for sheriff. I knew about it before, under the previous administration, before Sheriff White, along with the administration of Sheriff Thomas Breelove. That facility is a depreciation, it's a deteriorating facility that has gone on over a period of years. It just didn't happen since 2018. And we've got a lot of concerns, health issues, safety issues regarding to the staff and both employee inmates. And I just want to recognize and let people know, first of all, everybody in our detention center are not convicted. They're still presumed innocent until they go to court and be convicted. So therefore, they are somebody to someone. And we're at the point that right now, due to the capacity rating, that we cannot classify our inmates for whatever reason, whether it's illness, sick, misdemeanor felony charges, and that's a violation of North Carolina general statutes. And we've been violating that for some period of time. And this is, somebody's gonna bite us. It's gonna hurt us. And I want you to think about this. I don't know if you have grandchildren or children that are aged to be arrested. But think of your child being arrested on a misdemeanor charge and you're not in place to get them out of jail. You're out of town or whatever, and they don't know how to get out of jail. And I send them there to the detention center, and they locked up with someone charged with murder or rape or drug charges. And they just happen to get molested or raped themselves. Think about that. Resonate on that. Because at that facility, we do not have the proper place to do what we need to do according to law. Major Mitchell has provided some stuff. Just also want to let you know that our former major, Johnny Hawkins, is no longer with us. His day was last Friday, so it kind of left us in a limbo and things. We got started. Major Mitchell has been picked up on there for the last two weeks and working diligently to come up with a plan of action. Myself, him, Jeremy, and the county manager went to Granville County today to look at the facility. And we're sitting here thinking about it, and I don't just think it's gonna work to do what we need to get done. So we're back at the drawing board trying to come up with a plan, a concrete plan of action. Major.
Good evening, members of the board. I appreciate y'all. Let me speak to you again. I'm not gonna sit here and try and regurgitate everything that we talked about Friday. But I do appreciate your time. I've spent a lot of time with most everyone back there to the point, and I'll probably put you on my Christmas mailer because we're about family at this point. But referencing the detention facility, as was discussed in the retreat, we kind of anticipated this may occur. But literally this afternoon, shortly after four o'clock, I got an email correspondence from the state inspector's office, basically sent me a letter of criticality, excuse me, criticality. They've extended my deadline, the sheriff's deadline, until February the 21st to basically outline a plan for them to address the 88 deficiencies that they cited in the December inspection. I would beg you folks to please come together and let's, let's pick a direction that we're going to go in sooner rather than later. I was unaware until this afternoon. I believe the company is Mosley presented three options to the county board in '23. Of course, back then, I wouldn't have any, any knowledge of those goings on. But we're well beyond the point of having to take some action. And the urgency on my part personally is, again, I've got to prepare that documentation to the state by February the 21st. And it's, it's, it's all but impossible for me to address 88 deficiencies until I have an idea and the sheriff has an idea of what direction the county board is going to go in. That will be a huge determining factor as to how I address this issue. And you know, there's no saying everyone has a solution to a bad problem until they have a bad problem. But we've got a bad problem, and there's no easy solution. But I'll tell you this, I didn't know this until shortly after five o'clock. And I'm gonna give kudos where they're due. Been speaking, I think I told you all Friday, with Mike Waters' office. Mike reached out to me late this afternoon. He's come up with a plan. We're gonna have some meetings this week. And good Lord willing, in just a few short weeks, we'll be able to start on some depopulation. Potentially getting at least 20 inmates out. We're gonna have to depopulate the jail. We're gonna have to empty the jail. There is no other way around it. At an average of seventy dollars a day per head for outside housing, just getting those 20 inmates out will save this county five hundred and eleven thousand dollars annually until whatever decision is made comes to fruition and we get it done. So just, I, I just simply asked it, did y'all really give us some prayerful consideration? And, and we, we need a direction, you know? And then I'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions?
First question?
Yes, sir.
Is that jail, Bill?
Sir, I, I have not been able to get an exact date, as I understand it was in the late 50s.
So that jail's been there for over 50 years?
Yes, sir. As we discussed Friday, if we, if, if it's the pleasure of the board that you attempt to repair what we have, it will be the fourth iteration in that facility.
But if I read this right, what you put here is if we were trying to correct things that's wrong in that jail now, it's over five million dollars. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, by five point one million.
And I understand if you're looking at doing anything in the future as far as something different, you're talking about forty million dollars.
That's just north of forty million, yes.
Commission, and that does not change the capacity. That's just bringing the jail up to the minimum requirements required by the state. So we're still in, if we spend that five million dollars, that does not change the capacity of the jail.
So you, you mentioned something about the district attorney had talked about something. I don't know, what, and you talked about that today. Now what are you talking about?
Yes, it, it goes back to something we discussed on Friday. Folks collectively, we were trying to determine why it is cases, inmates are not being moved out, adjudicated, and moved on either released or moved on to Department of Adult Corrections. And it's multiple, multiple different reasons, but basically what it boils down to is there is only one public defender that will take high-level felonies in Vance County, and they are out of Durham. We have developed a list of low-level offenders between the sheriff's office and Mr. Waters' office. And what we hope to do is to take the low-level offenders and either get a bond reduction or get a plea entered. The only problem with getting pleas entered, if they have an attorney, the attorney has to do a consent order. But Mike's office and the sheriff's office are working together to try and get a, something going within the next week or two to help get our numbers down. As, as this morning, I believe we're 161 inmates, 20, 20, 22 over. And you've got grown men, you know, sleeping on floors. I mean, it's like the sheriff said, I discussed it Friday. I'm not gonna preach, but I'm a constitutionalist, and I believe that in this country, every man and woman has a presumption of innocence until proven guilty. If you were housed in a local confinement facility, you're waiting adjudication, you've not been convicted of anything.
Of all the, of all the counties that are contiguous with us, what is their average life of their jail?
The only one I can speak to with any certainty is Franklin County. I worked in Franklin County from '91 until I came up here to work with Sheriff Brain. We built our new facility in '96, moved into '97, I believe. And I believe they just did an expansion renovation within the last five, six years.
Of course, Granville County just built a new jail. That's correct.
That's my understanding, yes.
How does Warren County stand with that?
Their population is only 45. I discussed it with both Granville and Warren County about a regional facility. And Warren County don't want to get in. Halifax County, they'll give me to build a new facility. That's correct. Yes. And, and on top of that, even if the district attorney depopulate or send 20 people off to state facility, there's a repository that the sheriff office holds and the police department holds called E-Want System. And our system, we have over 700 warrants. The police department has another 600 and some warrants. Child support enforcement judge could tell you, we've probably got 160 defendants waiting to be picked up for child support here in Vance County. I just had a meeting with probation, for probation ascanders. They have 40 warrants. They want, just people in Vance County, they want to come here and serve those warrants and put those people in our facility right now. So even if we move 20 out, we've got another four, 500 ready to be processed. And I don't know how many will get bonded and will end up in our facility.
I think we reached consensus the other day. It doesn't matter if you decide tonight we're gonna build a new jail. We still gotta fix the problem immediately. This letter says that pretty succinctly. Mr. Brown, if I could address that right quick, this is, this is what our intentions are at this point. The Vance County Detention Facility is going to have to be emptied, one way or the other. We're gonna have to empty it. I wouldn't house my dog in some of those doors. But regardless how the board moves, we will have to empty the facility. Um, so what I'm going to do, and I've already began two weeks ago. Uh, sheriff's office reached out to a couple of different, uh, sheriff's offices locally. To see what committal they would give us, what commitment to house some of our inmates. But at 161 inmates, you know, I'm getting some verbal commitment for 10 here, 10 there. It's going to be a lot of lead work. We're going to have to empty the facility. So the more that we can get out through adjudication, the cheaper it's going to be on the citizens of this county. What you talked Friday about the facility in Granville County, where are we on that? Um, Mr. Brown, we went and visited that facility this morning, uh, assistant county manager, county manager attended that. I had already been cautioned by the state. That just because it may look pleasing to us, they fell under their regulations, not ours, not, not, uh, Department of Adult Corrections. We went and looked at the facility, um, and I'm going to be honest and candid, what I told the boss. We're not moving, we can't, we're not going to convince the state to move from one problem into another. They've got paint peeling off the wall, a hole in the wall in the showers you can put your head in. Uh, a stopped up toilet in one dorm, the water fountain leaking in the floor. And, and I talked to, to Mr. Wood this afternoon and told him what I saw. And he just told me again, use extreme caution because they have to come and inspect it before we can move the first body in there. And all of those repairs that would be required by the state. To move into that facility would then be an encumbrance to, to the county of Vance, not that facility.
And, um, daily, daily rate is $138 a day?
It starts at 138.
138.
And it migrates south based upon what the facility has to provide.
We had to provide all the bedding. They have the, the metal frames there. We had to provide all the bedding and our staff. That's still at that rate.
Now, Mr. Brown, that, that, that sounds excessive and, and if, if, if we just dropped one off. And they maintain them, that's what it would be. So I, I don't want to mislead you into thinking it would be 138, but that is where it starts. And then it comes down because we will provide medical, we will provide the, uh, detention staff. The clothing, the mattresses, all the, the canteens. So the price would, would come down. Um, I believe it was Moncom County had to depopulate their jail during hurricane. And I think the average rate was $60 a day per head. There is a facility that charges as high as 100. So my math that I'm using, uh, I'm setting it at 70 per head. So if it's less, I'll be tickled to death and I don't see it being much more than that. Did we find the guy that Shelton developed when he was here? I think that number came in at like 67. Shelton did a analysis on a.
It was two years ago.
Correct.
Yeah.
Renee?
We have that information still.
Yes, sir.
Just for some education purposes. So you're saying Halifax is getting ready to build a new jail?
Yes, sir.
So have they put it out for bids?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
And so what's the length of time of conduct, construction?
I don't know. I, I would think no more than three years. I can do some research for you. I would say no more than three years for construction for a facility, but that's just my best guess.
Talking about, you're talking about anywhere from four, three to four years. Before you could get anything as far as new construction in place is what, where we are in Halifax.
Yes, sir.
Which is probably so in mo- most rural counties.
Yes, sir.
But I think would be more helpful if, um, the state would know that we would commit to doing something. We need to stop tabling this. We start, need to see not, this need to stop going to committees. We need to take some action. We need to move forward. Either we're going to build a jail or we're not.
Hey Sheriff, it's, it's to my understanding, just to repair what needs to be fixed is almost 35 million as well. If I'm, it's.
That was, uh, for most architects, that was to come in and build, I think it was 94 more bed space.
That was expand, that was expansion, 32 million.
Even to build it just as much, you know, to, to repair it is.
It is to build a new facility. That's correct. Yes.
That's my point.
And so if the pleasure of this board at some point is to build a new facility. Um, we've had some conversations about the budget impact and we do, we know and we understand that. But the detention center budget annually is about $5 million. So we could utilize those funds if we wanted to house inmates in other facilities until we are up and running and we have a new facility. If that was a desire of this board, so. But we would have to keep some staff for transportation.
Same thing most rural counties are doing and going back to USDA to get money. They lend money for jails.
Yes, they do. Yes, sir.
If I could.
Good question, Renee. Where Halifax is going to new jail, are they maintaining their population in the old jail of the day? What, what the term you say, empty the jail?
Depopulate.
Depopulate. What do they do?
So they keeping them in the current space and they're building in the parking lot of the facility they have now. So they're building in the parking lot. They're, yeah, no, it's a, I don't think they're expanding though. Is that what they're doing? Okay. Well, I do know that they're moving the parking lot so they can build the facility in the, in current employee parking lot. That makes any sense.
So they were forced to build a new jail?
Their jail was essentially on the way to where our jail is. At the conditions of their jail, ours is worse.
Ours is worse?
Yes, sir.
Ours is definitely worse. I've been in Halifax.
Yes, sir.
At least the paint was on the walls.
Yeah.
If we, so when does Halifax plan to move in theirs?
Oh, no, they haven't even, um, they haven't even broke ground yet. So they're in that very early stages right now. But their board has approved to move forward.
Moving into a new jail, they're around here. Cause he says depopulate. If the jail's not in bad shape, could we depopulate in one of those other jails as we make a decision to move forward?
So what's your question?
My thing is that if you have to depopulate, it looks like we're going to eat, I don't think we're going to spend money to repair, repair jail. So obviously we're going to have to build a jail. Uh, so if we decide to build a jail. Is there a jail around that, that's built, that's built a jail that the jail is still standing that we could depopulate and use there? Till, until something is built.
I think, I think the, um, sheriff's office has been doing research of other facilities throughout the state that we can utilize until we move forward. Right? Correct. You've been, you've contacted several facilities.
And let me add to that as well. I don't, I don't want to put on rose colored glasses and lead you down the road thinking that this is better than it is. But there again, keep in mind that, that our current population of 161 in-house. Based upon the estimated per head daily cost. If we move 161 inmates out, it's about 5.1 million annually. The jail budget right now is 4.9 million. Keep in mind, working with Mike Waters' office and the judges. If we can voluntarily on our own, get some of these folks out, whether it be to make a bond or get a case adjudicated, movement Department of Adult Corrections. Just 20 of those 161 saves 5 million. I'm sorry, 511,000 annually. If you deduct that from the 5.1 for remote housing, it brings you below budget, below what our budget is now. You've still got transport costs. Correct. Now you still, we talked about this Friday, you will still have to maintain a little bit of capital money because we've got to have vehicles. To go pick these inmates up and we've still got to maintain some staff to go pick them up and bring them back. But that is in my mind, the most logical way to go. You indicated Friday that if we were to get started immediately on repairs in existing jail. Might take up six months. Is that correct? Six, six to eight months. I believe Mosley projected five or six to eight months.
Six months. Mm-hmm.
And I've still, of course, not gotten the quote back from the other contractor. So.
So in essence, what you're telling me is we're going to spend $5 million repairing the jail, which is about the cost that we cover for one year when. One year we moved them somewhere elsewhere as if it's going to cost four years. That's, 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 that's $20 million.
Well, but keep in mind, if we use remote housing, okay, let's, to keep the math simple. Let's say we depopulate the jail fully in surrounding counties and it costs the county advance $5 million a year.
A year?
A year. You're already, you are already allocating.
I told you it's going to take four years.
Yes, sir, but you're already allocating 4.9 million annually to the facility anyway. And if we can get the numbers down, then the cost of outside housing decreases below what you already allocate in the budget.
You haven't got the numbers down yet.
But that's what we're working towards. We have, we have no choice.
You're working towards that.
Yes.
But it's, but you're not there yet.
No, sir. Keep in mind, I've, I've, I've been involved with this for the last two weeks of, in essence, today, two weeks today. And honestly, I think, um, between the sheriff and I, we've made some great progress in, in this short period of time. You said $70 was the number you were using? That, that's my projection. That comes up to 3.5 million. Around 65 days at $70, 161. Yeah, I'm getting 4.1 million. So that's even better. Keep in mind, I'm sorry, but I'm going off the top of my head. I don't. I'm not trying to dazzle you with eloquence of speech. I'm just, I'm trying to impress a point.
Okay, so.
So what, I. We, we've got to take some.
We've got to take some actions.
We can't afford to keep our inmates housed somewhere else for five years, I don't believe. So I think our immediate action is we've got to do these repairs to the jail. And in a, in a very quick manner. Uh, you've already, we, I think we talked about having an RFP prepared.
We couldn't have that because.
Right. So, um, mostly, we did that in 2022, 2023. And so Mosley gave us three, three recommendations, um, in 2023. And so their opinion of probable cause for repairs to the existing jail based off of data in 2022 and 2023. Was, um, 5.2 million, um, expansion of the current space is 31.2 million. And the new bill was 42.5 million. So if the pleasure of this board is for us to move forward with, um, I guess exploring renovation of the current space. I would ask that we just, uh, reengage with Mosley Architects to see what the next steps are instead of doing. An RFP because we spent 49, almost $49,000 in 2023 with this RFP process. Forty, about 48, 615.
The fourth option that we keep skipping is the regionalization. That's still an opportunity maybe with Granville County.
But you got to realize they have to have a decision quick and I, I've been talking to Granville for a minute, I believe. And so we're talking, we've been talking about a regional and they have to have a decision by.
I think they will help our response back to the state that if we had some type of commitment, like if we're going to move forward and build a new facility and our ELEA, and that, we, they need to know.
And I would add this, if I may, I want to get out of line. Um, and I'm not trying to dissuade y'all, wondering from remodeling or whatever you do. But if that is the direction that you go, you will still pay the house inmates outside of your facility. For six to eight months.
If we can bring them back.
For, for eternity.
Yeah, just because of the capacity issue. It'll still be, yeah.
And so what I would like to see, uh, we have a commissioner that is out sick. Um, but I would like to maybe call a meeting.
Special call meeting?
This week. So, um, we can come together to discuss. Uh, it more in details. I know we got a deadline and we need to give you all, uh, answer quickly. But, uh, we do have a commissioner out that's sick and I would love for her to be a part. Um, so I, I want to call a special call meeting this week and, and definitely we can hopefully make a decision on what we need to do.
Also, while we're standing here on the, um, county, county manager's report on the inspection, can we skip that or we going to move forward with it? Can we discuss it?
But the, um, the, the December 2024, it's up under my county manager's report. They, all they do is act to accept it. Not unless you want to discuss it.
I don't want to discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah. So I just want to call us and I'll let you know.
Okay. Okay. We just need to make sure we do the 48 hour notice.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you so much. Now we get ready to open the water board. So will I turn it over to you tonight?
Yes. Frankie's going to handle those items up under the water district board. Thank you.
All right, before you tonight, we have a phase one B first payout. Um, we are bringing this to you because of the amount and the AWPA revenue replacement funds. Um, we started our project, uh, on the 14th of January. Uh. And we received our first invoice with the amount of $1,361,997.77. And that's for 75% of material to do phase one B. And the reason all of this is at one time is because they held a bid and the price was so long for us, for the two years. That they had to order their material when we got the, when we give them the letter to, of acceptance. Um, so we are asking you tonight to recommend, we recommend approving the budget amendment number 25. In the amount of $1,361,997.77 to pay the first invoice. And this is part of our $2 million in the AWPA revenue replacement funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Agreed.
All opposed? Eyes heavy.
I hope you go back and tell that contractor too, which is local, which is I love. Thank you for what he did for holding that price. Thank you for what he did. We need to work with him any way we can, as nice as they were to hold the price they did.
I'll be sure to pass that on.
Thanks.
Uh, the next item we have is the phase one B sign up and reduce rate extension. With a timeline of 18 months of construction, staff is requesting an extension for the signup period and reduce rate. The current time period is from December the 2nd to February the 28th. Uh, staff recommends extending the signup period and reduce rate extension. Uh, we're just looking for some direction from the water board for a detime period of extension.
I think in the past, we've maintained that signup period for the full time of construction.
Absolutely.
And, and I think the other issue on that was, um, there's a fee for boring under a road.
Now we, 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 in the past, what we've all done is during the time that we had these, we've cut it to the $125. During the period, whether it was on one side of the road or the other side of the road.
That's right.
And what this does is fair to all the citizens in the county because it gives them all an opportunity to sign up as far as that's concerned. And Dan, I, I, I'd want to extend it to the time of construction.
That's why I believe we should do that. Uh, the other thing was when we did the original signups, and I've had some inquiries on that. We had, um, what we called a dry tap fee. Which I think at that time it was like $800. And, and then you didn't have to pay the, the monthly fee. And, but I don't know what the cost of the tap is. That was back 2007 or eight, somewhere in there.
I will tell you what I found over the weekend. I went through every single, um, WP docs that we had on water trying to figure, find that. The only thing I found, it was on a frequently asked question sheet. And it was $800 for, uh, three quarter inch tap and 1,200 for one inch tap. Um, and that did, it did say in there that there would not be a monthly fee if they paid that.
The only question Dan, I got about that is one question. If you put it up that high. And you, and you're a good businessman, you won't do it. Because if you sit there for a year or two, you're going to end up being the same cost.
Let me tell you, uh, Mr. Brown asked me to find out what HG Reynolds is charging for a actual tap. The short tap and basically on the ones that don't know, short tap is when the, the line, water line is on the same side of the road. Right now that cost is $1,550. The long tap, which is the water line is on the opposite side of the road and we have to bore under the road is 3,000.
$2,200 is the average.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um, I mean, our question and my concern isn't.
What becomes cost prohibitive in, in my world? That $2,200.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know what you, I don't know where you're going with that.
Well, he said, if you were to do a dry tap, we, what we, when we did it before, the $800 covered our cost of that. So it was no cost to the county on that. Right now he's saying that between the short tap and the long tap, it'd be an average of around $2,200. And that to me doesn't make good economic sense.
Well, my point is that, you know, we're trying to get as many customers as we possibly can. And the easier we can make it for those customers, the more chance you have for people to come sign up. And so I would like to see us go with the guy who has $125, no matter what side of the. And so I would like to see us go with the guy who has a hundred and twenty-five dollars, no matter what side of the road it's on, for the least time of construction.
I agree with that. You're going to say what? But what about the, what about the dry tap? That's the question I have.
I wouldn't do the dry tap.
Okay, because the, right now, that would be like twenty.
Simple.
That'd be twenty-two hundred dollars.
I, I, I wouldn't do, I wouldn't do it. I think, I think you're better off with the one twenty-five and, and let people do it that way. We've had great success in the past.
Frankie, which cost did you say the USDA would support us in? I can't remember.
The USDA will help us while we're doing Phase One B in the Phase One B project.
Yes, they're going to help you.
Yeah.
Okay.
What we did is we opened it up to our other phases.
Okay.
And what EnviroLink has been doing, just to bring everybody up to par, we have, if the water line is already actual resident, passenger resident, they've been doing the one twenty-five, but then if you're on the other side of the road, they have been charging the seven fifty. So if we need to take that away, that's fine. I just need to know recommendation from y'all.
I'll make a motion that during the construction period, we do taps throughout the county at one twenty-five and no long tap fee.
It has been motioned second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
All right. On, on C, Phase One B community meetings. Staff will schedule community meetings based off the extension of the sign-up period and reduce rate period timer approved by the Water Board. Looking back through WP docs, I did find where we did it one month every Tuesday night for that month at seven o'clock until they finished. And that was in different locations, schools, one night they had it up here. I, I think we're looking for, also pleasure the board, how you want us to handle that.
We did those. We were doing Sandy Creek and out towards Middleburg, that area, and then up in the northern part of the county. So that's why we had both. To me, I think, you know, we have one down in the Kitchell area, and then maybe one, I guess, you know, if we could find a place, a fire department or something.
I tell you, Dan, I agree with you on that, but you know who ought to handle that? Outstanding job is our county manager make it happen.
So I think we just say we have two of them.
Let her handle it.
Yeah. We'll have two of them, and if you decide you need more, then go forward.
Okay, we'll take care of it.
Um, do y'all want to kind of know what the, how the project's going while I'm up here?
Oh, yeah.
So far, they have laid seven hundred and six, seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-one feet of six-inch bike, seventeen hundred and eighty-five feet of four-inch, seven hundred and eighty feet of two-inch. They have installed three hydrants. They have completed one bore with another one scheduled for tomorrow. We are getting some sign-ups still, so that's looking good. I think they, today we had thirteen they showed me in the other phases, so we have some, we have some sign-ups coming. They started on Dick Smith Road, but now we have two crews. So we have one on Dick Smith Road and one on South Chavis. Any other questions from me? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. None of my other operation report. Nobody have any questions? All right, so we'll move on to the committed reports and recommendation, the planning and environmental committee.
Ma'am, so the commercial charge accounts at the landfill.
Wait a minute, I want to close the water, I'm sorry. Close the Water District Board and open up the committed reports and recommendation.
Motion to close the Water Board.
She just closed it.
Okay, so the planning and environmental committee, Feenster and Kelly met on Monday, January twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-five to discuss the final draft policy for, for the solid waste credit accounts. And so in order to align the landfill's current practices with a credit account policy and ensure operational efficiency, staff and the county attorney created a policy for board approval. So the recommendation is to approve the commercial charge accounts policy with an effective date of February third, twenty twenty-five.
What's the pleasure of the board? It has been motioned second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, so Properties Committee met to discuss the mobile food services policy. The committee Kelly, Kelly Brummett and Perry met on Monday, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five to discuss the final draft of the mobile food services policy, which is attached in your agenda packet. And so in to enhance community engagement and economic growth, the committee recommends adoption of the attached policy, and their recommendation is just to approve the mobile food services policy with an effective date of February third, twenty twenty-five.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Ex-approval of the mobile food services policy?
Any discussion? It has been moved, motioned second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
And also at that same Properties Committee meeting, we discussed the nine-one-one, nine-one-one tower property. So the emergency service, emergency operations director Vivian Lassiter advised the committee that the land on which the nine-one-one tower is currently located will be for sale soon, and the property owner would like to give the county the opportunity to purchase the land. So the recommendation is just to direct staff to begin the process of researching the purchase of the property on which our current nine-one-one tower is located.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Just allow staff to continue researching the purchase of the property for our current nine-one-one tower, well, tower located.
It has been motioned second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. Now we move down to our finance director's report.
Good evening, everyone. So the audit committee had two meetings since our last board of commissioners meeting. The first one was January the sixth. So there were committee members present with Commissioner Brummett, Archie Taylor, Commissioner Hester, Amanda Spivey, Mark Woodley, staff members, county manager, myself, assistant county manager, Jeremy Jones, Frankie Nobles, Kelly Grissom. Hunter, at that meeting, Hunter was there in person, and Alan, who spoke tonight, joined us via the phone. So some of the things that Hunter talked about, everything he talked about, he talked about upcoming Gatsby one-on-one regulation, which I'm going to try not to read everything because Alan covered some of the same information tonight, but he talked about the upcoming Gatsby regulation that, and also that the finance director needs to spend more time with the compliance and other higher level responsibility. Staffs need more training. Review the software, and we're going to work with the vendor to make sure he's able to produce some of the documents in the necessary format for the external audit. So no financial system is perfect. So he just provided some suggestion for points of contacts that training can be obtained from. And some of the areas of focus for the staff are going to be payables, receivables, accrual, and journal entries. So the committee was also provided with a report from, from myself, which we talked about the list of info, list of items that have been done as a result of us being on the unit assistant list coach. Okay. Let me see. So Mr. Wiseman, Hunter Wiseman, also educated the committee on the audit process and the steps needed in its completion, and provided with the committed with steps taken in completing the audit, and there was a lengthy question and answer sessions. He also informed the committee that the new state deadline, which is going to be of the audit completed, is going to be December the thirty-first. But that was from the January sixth meeting. From the January twenty-eighth meeting, so Hunter appeared via, via phone, and he covered the audit draft, which was also covered tonight. So he provided again the overview of the annual audit, answered the questions, noted that he received our corrective action plan from the county staff, as well as findings from the DSS. And the committee asked several questions relating to opiates, contracts, leases, subscriptions, check writing, departmental budgets, internal controls. So these concerns were addressed, and then changes are in process that have been taking place. And then, of course, training is going to be ongoing. It's also noted that there were eight findings in the prior fiscal year, so this year they were reduced to four. So the committee recommends soliciting another request for proposals for external audit firms when the current contract, contract ends. Are there any questions?
Just, just to, there are a couple of things, there was.
Okay.
There were still some other questions the committee had. We received the audit less than twenty-four hours before this.
Yes, yes.
And so there's still some questions we have open. In addition to that, we're still having the conversation about a forensic audit. And, and there were some questions that they're still pending that we wanted to get the answers to. And so, so just so everybody's aware of that.
Is there just been a question from the committee?
Yes.
So one of those questions, Commissioner Brummett, was in reference to the one point eight, one million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars that was under subsequent expenditure assigned, fund balance. So went back and looked, that was actually, that amount is what they lift from our budget ordinance. So when the budget was done for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we had allocated one million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars from the fund balance so that the fund, so that we can reconcile the revenue to the expenditures for that fiscal year. So that amount was lifted straight from the budget ordinance.
Okay, so we're, so because we didn't allocate it in this budget.
Right, there wasn't anything to report, yes.
So, but, so that money went back into the fund balance?
If it's not spent, yes.
Okay, and that would be part of the surplus of that five point seven?
No, so I think the number is really the number that we use to balance the budget, so we didn't need to pull from fund balance this year because of the ten cent tax increase. So we didn't have to pull anything from fund balance in order to balance the budget, so it should be zero. Because we didn't use any fund balance, it's subsequent funds. So funds that we would use from the general fund, but we didn't have to use anything this year.
Point eight was listed as construction projects.
And I think there were some issues with the verbiage of how it was listed. I think it was listed incorrectly, but Hunter advised us today that the number should be zero because we didn't use any fund balance this year for fiscal year twenty-five budget.
And I, and I guess I knew we didn't use that money last year. And what my question was, was where did that money go? Did it go into fund balance? Because it's not stated on this year's audit.
So we'll, we'll get with Hunter on that, but I've got to get a better understanding of what you're asking as well.
So at the end of every year, as far as the, there's a reconciliation between the revenue and expenditures. So whatever is not used is rolled over into the fund balance. So it may, it may not necessarily be the one point eight, it could be more, it could be less, but there's a reconciliation process that's done.
Okay.
Any more questions? Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay.
We're going to move on to the Assistant County Manager Report.
Good evening, Board. Carolina Recording Software Vance County Emergency Operations is requesting a new digital recorder for main and backup nine-one-one centers. The recordings they are seeking to purchase is from the Carolina Recording System, which has been used since March of two thousand nine. The NC nine-one-one board has authorized nine-one-one emergency telephone service funds to be used to cover one hundred percent of the purchase, which is one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars, no local funds utilized. This company is a vendor in the North Carolina Sheriff's Association Procurement Program. That program conducts a statewide procurement process, which alleviates us from having to go through the bidding process as we have piggyback on the state's procedures. The recommendation is to approve the contract for one hundred and thirty-nine dollars, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars.
Madam Chair, I want to clarify one point. The company does participate in the Sheriff's Association's procurement program, but this proposed contract is not being let underneath of that program because they have a different program that allows them to give better pricing if they don't use that program. That's important to note for a couple of different reasons. One, obviously, the Sheriff's Association gets a cut of the contract from the vendor if it's approved vis-a-vis their, their bidding receipts. But more importantly, the statutes require the board to approve all single-source contracts. So because of the size of this contract, it would normally require this to go out to public bidding. It did not, and it did not because there is only a single source that is available to get this brand and this type of hardware and software to fit in and be compatible with the balance of our system. And that's allowed, that's permitted, but it always has to be approved by the full board. So that's why it's coming before you guys tonight.
Good part is it's coming out of the nine-one-one fund, so it doesn't affect our budget.
That's how we.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Ex-approval of the contract for one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars.
It has been motioned second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. We're going to move on to our county manager report.
Okay, so Black History Month resolution. February has been observed nationally, nationally as Black History Month. Vance County has traditionally encouraged its citizens to participate in related events that create a greater awareness and appreciation of contributions made by African-Americans. The recommendation is to adopt the resolution in support of the designation of February as Black History Month in Vance County.
Second.
It has been motioned second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, America two-fiftieth North Carolina Resolution. So at your November twenty twenty-four regular meeting, staff was given direction to move forward with advertising the vacancies for the America two-fifty North Carolina Committee. In twenty twenty-six, the United States will be celebrating the two-fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. America two-fifty NC is a program of the NC Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, and they're partnering with local governments and nonprofits throughout North Carolina to mark this anniversary. Many North Carolina counties form official committees dedicated to planning and organizing events, projects, and initiatives at the county level. Staff will apply for the No Match Grant to fund proposed projects by the deadline of February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-five. And so the recommendation is just to adopt the resolution in support of the America two-fifty celebration.
If adoption of the resolution in support of America two-fifty celebration.
It has been motioned second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes carry.
Okay, so Appointment of Review Officers Resolution. Review officers are required in the tax, in the tax office to review plaques and certify that they meet statutory requirements before being recorded with the register of deeds. The recommendation is to approve resolution to appoint Davana Kitchell, Assistant Tax Administrator, and Erin McGee, Tax Assessing Technician as review officers as required by North Carolina General Statute forty-seven dash thirty.
Still move, second.
It has been motioned second. Any discussions? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, D, Jail Inspection Report. The state conducted its periodic jail inspection in December twenty twenty-four. As you are aware, the sheriff is responsible for overseeing the jail, although it is necessary for the commissioners to receive the jail inspection report and be aware of potential budget items. So the recommendation is just to act to receive the report as information.
I have to receive the report. Sip in a reluctant lip, huh? I sip in it.
It has been motioned second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, Fire Tax Disbursement. At the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget work session, there was a consensus to equally disperse approximately one half of the fire tax fund balance amongst the non-volunteer fire departments. The actual balance as of June thirty, twenty twenty-three was five hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. The actual balance as of June thirty, twenty twenty-three was five hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. The finance director stated that after the completion of the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four audit that, and she has confirmed an updated fire tax fund balance amount. Equal dis- equal dispersment of one-half of the unappropriated fund balance to the non-volunteer departments may be made. With receipt of the fiscal year twenty-four audit report tonight, the fire tax fund balance is seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The fiscal year twenty-five budget appropriated two hundred and three thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars of fire tax fund balance. The net amount is five hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. And one-half of that for dispersment is two hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. The two eighty-five, three seventy-five spl- splits amongst the nine departments is equal to thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. Recommendation is to approve the budget amendment number twenty-nine and authorize the finance director to process payments in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and thirty-three cents from the fire tax fund balance to each volunteer department.
That, that was based on the twenty-three fund balance, right?
Twenty-four. This, this year. Twenty-four.
The audit we just received.
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Did you make a motion?
Made a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it, just, I'm not still trying to grab hold of it.
So you haven't confirmed it?
I didn't suck.
I'm trying to take hold of it. It has been motioned second. Any discussion?
Uh, I'm, I'm still, you know, man.
Oh, he, he wa- he waiting for a discussion. He said, wait a minute. Got enough questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Stephanie, you think you can get that processed by next Friday, next week? Okay, all right. Um, so the March twenty-twenty-five regular meeting date, so just as a reminder, your March regular meeting will be held on the tenth instead of the first Monday just because of the, I believe it's a, it's a conference in DC. So your meeting will be on March tenth instead of March third.
Anybody going to the conference?
Yeah. Yolanda and.
Okay. Yeah.
Elizabeth.
Okay.
And that, that's it for me.
I have a vote in delegate for that.
It's just FYI. It's just for your information. It's just a reminder.
It's fine.
Okay, moving to the consent agenda items.
I showed this in the comment. I'm looking at the tax report. And. I think we've got to be very conscious this year with our collection rate. Because it looks like that's off a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
And if we do that, then we can only budget, you know, whatever percentage of our collections.
Right.
So we've got to be, be conscious of that and stay on top of that. I know there's some conversation about not aggressively pursuing the delinquent taxes or whatever for this year. But. We've got to, our statute, we've got to. We gotta figure that part out.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, um, Portia's been sending me a monthly report so we can keep up with the tax collection rate. And I'm comparing it to the past two years, previous two years as well.
Yeah, it looks like it was behind, basically.
It is, mm-hmm, it is.
Did you have a motion to accept the, um, consent agenda items?
Motion. Accept. Consent agenda.
Second.
Wait, I missed that.
He made a motion to accept.
Accept the consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Second.
It has been motioned second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Mr. Lanis, up to you, Kelly.
We have appointments for the month. The Farmers Market Advisory Committee appoint Paul Lewis to fill a vacant position. The Cartar Cog Regional Aging Advisory Committee reappoint Brenda Poole and Henry Cruz. The Henderson Planning Board reappoint Phil Walters. The Henderson Zoning Board of Adjustments reappoint Edward Spain. The Vance County Planning Board reappoint Logan Derensberg and Ruxton Bobbitt. The Research Triangle Regional Partnership, uh, appoint EDC Director Ferdinand Rouse to fill the position formerly held by McKinley Perkinson. And the America two-fifty NC Committee, we received two applications from Patty McAnally and Barbara Harrison.
Okay, so what's the pleasure of the board to do?
Move for approval of our appointments. Second.
It's been motioned second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Can we get a motion to go into closed session?
Move to go into closed session for personnel.
Madam, madam chair, can we also include a brief discussion on an EDC matter? No, no, no vote expected.
Yes, we're doing it first, yeah.